Good evening and welcome to our 2024 financial plan public hearing. The time is 5:30, so we will start the meeting. Do we need a resolution Suzanne? Are we, do we have an adoption of the agenda? Okay, so I'll have the resolution to adopt the agenda.
It resolved that the agenda be adopted as presented.
Can I have a mover please? Counselor Postuma, seconded by Counselor Imhoff. All those in favor? That's carried. And then the resolution to open the public hearing.
It resolved that council open the carry of council for 2024-6, you know, by law to any taxes for the year 2024.
Can I have a mover please? Counselor Harachko, seconded by Counselor Duval. Call for the question, all those in favor? Carry to the public hearing is now open. And I'll present our presentation this evening. Well, first and foremost, the vision and the vision statement for East St. Paul is a vibrant community with a distinct lifestyle. Our mission statement, our municipality is committed to ensuring sustainable, efficient, and controlled growth. We are dedicated to conserving our heritage and enhancing our recreation facilities. The object, the objectives of the hearing is to provide residents with an overview of the 2024 financial plan and an opportunity to ask questions, gather information, and provide feedback. If you would like more details regarding the information presented today, please contact C A O Suzanne Ward. And the phone number, of course, is online. The financial planning process starts with a public hearing, goes to a bylaw introduction and adoption, moves through the preliminary budget prepared by departments, adjustments made by senior management, council working through sessions, revise the budget, prepare the financial plan, and then tonight we're done. So a lot of time and effort from staff and council goes into the budget. 2024 changes to property assessments. Provincial reassessments typically occur every two years. 2023 was a reassessment year based on property market values updated to April 1st, 2021. For 2024, the R M used the 2023 assessments plus any adjustments to the role provided by the self-assessment branch of the province of Manitoba based on development activities since the assessment. We have a graph here of 2017 to 2024 annual assessments. And you can see from 2017 to 2024, the assessment has increased significantly in values. Seeing it drop a little bit in 2018 and then consistently rising since. Your municipal tax dollars includes services such as fire protection, dust control, trails, animal control, mosquito control, by law enforcement, street cleaning, boulevard cleaning, traffic services, signage, weed control, administration, library refunds, snow removal, road maintenance, flood control and E M O services, outdoor skating rinks, emergency services, street lighting, brass cutting, parks, boulevards and ditches, recycling and garbage pickup, drainage, soccer, baseball fields, river replanting district, arena, flood risk management, consultants, parks and playgrounds and recreation. 2024 school tax information. School tax requirements are established by the school board and the province. Education support levy. The 2024 education support levy tax requirement, which only applies to commercial properties, will increase by 2% from 2023. River, the 2024 River East Transcona School Division tax requirement will increase by 9.6% from 2023. The province of Manitoba E P T C, which is the education property tax credit and rebate amount, will be a maximum of $350 in 2024. Property owners receive a 50% rebate of the school division special levy payable on residential and this will no longer be issued by check and will instead be directly applied to tax bills. The 2024 municipal mill rate is 8.642. That is a zero increase from 2023. The municipal mill rate is comprised of taxation, reserve provisions, and general borrowing. The following is a breakdown of the mill rate. For taxation, it's 5.445. For reserves, it's 3.197, and for borrowing, it's at zero. The 2024 municipal mill rate has not changed. 2023 Manitoba inflation C P I rate change is plus 3.5%. Changes for 2024. Residential mill rate is 8.642. That's the municipal. The River East School Division is 12.033 with a total of 20.675. This total residential mill rate has increased by 4.7% from 2023. The changes to the commercial mill rate is the municipal mill rate is 8.642. The River East School Division is 12.033. And the education support levy is 8.129 with a total of 28.804. This total commercial mill rate has increased by 3.3% from 2024. And the increase is coming from the school tax. 2024 residential mill rate change summary percentage. Municipal taxes will have a 0% change. And school taxes have a whopping 8.3% increase. Calculating your tax bill. The mill rate applies to, the mill rate applies to each 1,000 of an asset value, assessed value. Only a portion of your property assessed value is used for tax calculations. The residential portion is 45%. The commercial portion is 65%. How you would calculate your taxes is you would take the portion of assessment, divide by 1,000 and times it by the mill rate of 8.642, which will give you your tax amount for 2024. Once again, we have an example of that calculation based on an assessment of $500,000. So for 2023, the calculation for the property tax of a house at $500,000 equaled 4,443. So I gotta say that again, there's too many floors. Of that municipal tax is $1,944.45. And the school tax portion that we ship off to River East School Division is $2,499.30. To compare that to 2024, the increase brings it to $4,651.88. The municipal tax has not changed. It would be $1,944.45. And the school tax has increased to $2,707.43, which increase overall is $208.13, which equals to 4.7% increase. We have a chart here of prior years for municipal mill rate comparing ourselves to other municipalities in the capital region. If we compare ourselves to Springfield, in 2022, we were 8.472, 2023, we were 8.642. Of course, that resulted in an increase change of 0.170, which equal to 2.01%. And if we can, other municipalities, you know, Springfield is at 2.09 in between 2022 and 2023. Stonewall had a, had a decrease. West St. Paul had a decrease, of course, but West St. Paul has had an abundance of development, which has supported their, their their tax revenue. I don't know what else to say about that chart. For 2023, yeah. What does a 1% change look like in real dollars? So if the mill rate goes up by 1%, that increases our tax revenue $86,271. 2024 residential tax collection breakdown. So we have a chart, a pie chart here that shows that we will be collecting, overall, the portion of taxes that stays within the municipality is 41.8%. And the portion that we provide to the school tax is 58.2%. 2024 tax dollars collected. Municipal tax, municipal dollars collected through taxation, including business tax and L I Ds, In 2023, was 8,800, no, sorry, 8,800, 8,802.600. I'm saying that completely wrong. which is down $9,965 or 0.1%. Education dollars collected through taxation and directly forwarded to the, to the province, River East School Division is $12,521. One, I did it again. 2023 was 11,456,686. And so that means that it's up $1,644,500 or 9.3%. We have another chart that shows the 2024 municipal tax revenue analysts. And you can see that property taxes shows at 97.1%. France in lieu of taxes is 1%. Local improvement districts is 0.4%. And business tax, taxes is 1.5%. So it really shows us that we have to grow our business tax. And how have we been? So we're comparing from 2021 to 2024. The municipal mill rate. Our biggest increase that we're seeing here was in 2023 at 2.01%. And in 2021, 1.8%. And then the municipal, for the school tax, you can see their increases have gone up. When we had a decline for a couple of years and then the 8.3% that we're seeing in 2024. For your average annual change. Municipal mill rate has changed averagely over four years at 0.95% increase. And school mill rate has in, has decreased by 1.26%. Capital expense planning. Each year municipalities allocate funds to reserves for long-range planning. Saving funds through reserves over a long period of time allows council to make large capital expenditures without a significant one-year impact to taxes or borrowing. For example, we have $970,000 budgeted in 2024 to upgrade various aspects of the municipality's parks. Contributions to a reserve for these upgrades have been made for many, many years. And payment will be a transfer from the reserves. If we had not saved for these expenditures and collected tax dollars in the year of purchase, this would have resulted in a tax increase of an additional 11.2% to the municipal bill rate. We show another chart for 2024 capital expenditures equalling $10,71928. So we have public works, we most ended up at $5,400,000. We show engineering at $3,290,000. Community services at $1,38,145. Administration at $386,283. And we have water utility at $77,500. And we have sewer utility at $90,000. 2024 capital expenditures. Administration, our C S O program, our new program implemented in the R M, which will be an example for other R Ms, because I believe we are the first. And kudos to our C A O for putting that together with no example to follow. The C S O program, the startup cost is $207,258. The curling club is $35,000. And planning studies is $144,025 for a total of $386,283. Community services, equipment purchases at $72,000. Park upgrades at $323,645. Our splash pad contribution is $362,000. Ponds improvement, we have a budget number in there at $200,000. And trail improvements at $80,500 for a total of $1,38,140. Engineering feasibility studies, $590,000. Production well 10 development, $1 million. Water treatment plant distribution line twinning is $1.5 million. And that ensures that if anything was to go wrong with our water supply and distribution, we would have another line to ensure that East St. Paul could still be operating. Wastewater treatment plant design upgrade at $200,000 for a total of $3,290,000. We have fire equipment at $105,000. Building storage upgrades, $45,000 for a total of $150,000. Under public works, we have road improvements at $4,209,000. Drainage improvements at $511,500. Railway crossing upgrades at $115,000. Equipment purchases, $21,500. Transfer station upgrades, $163,000. Operations building office upgrade, $20,000 for a total of $5,400,000. Our reserve balances from 2012 to 2024. You know, I can compare general reserve in 2018, which was $15,232,191. In 2024, it will be $17,016,234. Adding the utility reserve brings it from, adding the utility reserve at $7,804,444 brings it to $24,096,632. So going back to 2018, I apologize, I forgot to add in the utility reserve there. That total number was $18,973,109. So an average, can't do the math, just, you know, it looks like about almost $6 million increase to 2024. Our 2024 sewer utility budget. The sewer utility operating budget is forecasted to be balanced. So sewer utility 2024 revenue is service charges at $1,790,000 and other at $62,953. The sewer utility 2024 expenditures, administration inspections is $104,688. Sewer district maintenance is $100,000. Sewage lift station, $63,350. Sewage treatment and disposal, $879,073. Vehicles, $14,350. Capital expenditures, $360,000. Deventured debt, debt charges, $54,153. Transfer to utility reserve, $237,339. Transfer from utility reserve is a negative of $360,000, bringing it to $1,852,950. The sewer utility 2024 capital expenditures is the lift at $90,000. Under water utility, our water utility budget is 50% revenue and 50% expenses. Water utility for 2024 revenue. Consumer sales is $650,000 and other is $73,900. Water utility expenses, personnel is $172,294. Administration, excuse me, is $58,675. Distribution is $75,000. Treatment plant is $100,471. Service of supply is $20,000. Transmission is $12,000. Vehicles is $8,850. Capital expenditures is $1,577,500. Transfer to utility reserve is $276,609. And transfer from utility reserve negative $1,577,000, bringing it to $723,900. Water utility. Mobile meter reader upgrade is $17,500. Water treatment plant switch upgrade is $30,000. Water well maintenance program is $30,000, bringing up to $77,500. Glenway Special Services. In 1976, the R M entered into an agreement with the city of Winnipeg to provide East St. Paul property owners on the north side of Glenway Avenue with water, sewer, and land drainage service. Annually, Glenway Avenue property owners are charged a flat rate on their tax bill as per bylaw 06-02. Identified as Glenway Special Services. The amount is based on the frontage cost for the services as invoiced by the city of Winnipeg to the R M. In 2024, the city of Winnipeg is increasing the frontage levy for Glenway Avenue property owners from $5.45 per front foot to $6.95 per front foot. This is an increase of 27.5% imposed under the Special Services Agreement with the city of Winnipeg. I just have to take a second. So for continuing goals, council will continue with their efforts in the areas of strategic planning and development of long-term funding strategies for upcoming projects, enhancing our community recreational facilities and programs, preserving our heritage, improving the aesthetics of the community, promoting growth and development in the commercial business sector, promoting sustainable, efficient, and controlled growth in the residential sector with an emphasis on housing options for our senior demographic, continually working to provide exemplary municipal operations and customer service. We have some important dates. Financial plan presentation will be available on our website. And the tax due date is Friday, September 27th, 2024. And the Board of Revisions is Thursday, October 3rd, 2024 at 5:30 P M in council chambers. I'd like to thank you for attending our public hearing tonight. I'd like to thank staff for all their work and the great presentation that I struggled to get the numbers right on, but I'll practice that for the future. So does council have any questions or comments in regards to our financial plan this evening? Thank you. Oh, I guess I should go to the audience first, sorry. I see an empty room and I forget about the online sometimes. We do have some individuals signed in. And I'm wondering if any of them would like to speak or ask any questions in regards to the financial plan. Does anyone have their hand up online that you can see?
Questions yet?
Okay. Will they be typing their questions or will they be speaking?
Like Vern is unmuted.
Okay. And it's Vern?
Oh, yeah, I unmuted my mic. I have a question as to whether there's any monies in the budget to save for the expansion of the sewer system with the moratorium on. I'm just wondering how this is working into the budget for this year, next year as a proposal? Or just maybe, are you going to be enlightening us a little bit on that?
And I can, I can pass the mic over to our financial manager and he can provide you with an update on that contribution.
Yes, hi Vern, this is Dana Pishy speaking, CFO here at the municipality of St. Paul. There is monies going into the, into our reserve funds annually for that upgrade that we know is coming at some point. So this year as well as last year, we are contributing $275,000 if I recall correctly into that reserve fund. So those will be available to use on an upgrade when it comes and when we know how much it might cost, so.
What is the total cost going to be, if you know that? And when will the moratorium be lifted once construction is complete? Is there any indication as to what kind of timeline you have with that, with the different levels of government involved?
Currently, we are in the process of doing a, our study in, for a regional plant. And that study will be done in August. And talking with the committee, we would really hope that we would have a facility opened up within four years. And, but that's going to really depend if we get those levels of government to provide contributions to us. And we are lobbying, we are lobbying them heavily. And they are well aware of our moratorium and they are motivated, as we are motivated, to get it lifted so that we can obviously continue to develop in East St. Paul.
Why, why did it get to this state, this, at this level? Why, why did it get to this state, this, uh, at, at this level? Why is, uh, um, was this not planned for, uh, in, in the past, in, in years going by so that we wouldn't be in this state now? Because, uh, you know, West St. Paul is, uh, obviously tied into the city, uh, which is a totally different scenario. But, uh, um, we're totally, um, hampering, uh, commercial development or even residential development. I can't even subdivide one lot, uh, let alone seven hundred or seven thousand people trying to get into the meadows. So I, I'm just trying to understand and get a grip on how this got to this state. And why we're in a moratorium for two years and you're saying there's still a study and it's gonna be another four years before we can move forward with this.
Well, to be. I can't speak, I don't know that anyone can speak to why in previous years, um, they weren't prepared for two thousand and twenty when a moratorium went on. I can say that if we moved forward in a direction where we would put. Um, and a small addition on to the existing plant. It would take the same amount of time, but considering the lands that want to develop, as you mentioned, the meadows lands, we have broken head lands. We have far lands, we have lands and countryside crossing, there's lots of lands and we have infill where individuals would like to subdivide their infill lots. If we were to move in a direction where we would spend about forty million dollars on a Band-Aid. The municipality would be in the same predicament. And, you know, ten to fifteen years from now. And really to get dollars today, you have to be looking at a regional approach. And so that is why this council moved to a regional approach and we are securing partners within that regional approach, which will take us to the next fifty years. Opposed to looking at a Band-Aid for a small amount of time. And it's not, it's not easy to achieve these dollars from different levels of government. So we are doing as best as we can, checking off all the boxes that we're supposed to. To hopefully have some sort of a direction in regards to funding this year.
Okay, it just seems like it's a bit of a Band-Aid effect, uh, based on, uh, blaming last year's council or whatever to. When, you know, this, this should have been, you know, there should have been some foresight into this, uh, a lot sooner than it is now and. And, uh, and not another four years before we even know what's going to be happening. That, that's my only concern.
Yeah, I, I'm not blaming other councils, I can't speak to why, uh, the information didn't come forward. But council in two thousand and twenty learnt of the, um, capacity of the plant and that we were at capacity and that the facility. Uh, you know, it's, it's from nineteen seventy and there's been some upgrades as you have to upgrade your computers and so, so forth over the years. However, um, I don't think that council, any council knew of, uh. The true capacity that was going to be presented to us in two thousand and twenty, I don't think that anybody knew. Um, and once council has secured funding. We do definitely want to look at, um, moving in a direction where individual, individuals or developers could come forward. And start removing, getting their processes going, because we would know then that a plant would be in the near future. So we are motivated to get development going. And unfortunately, a plant of this magnitude does take to, to, uh, plan, get funding for, and then of course, the construction aspect of it.
What happened two years ago when the, the funding was applied for, there's, you're saying there's another four years on top of the two years we've been waiting? Uh, I'm just trying to get a grip on the timeline.
Sure, yes, we did apply for funding and our application was not considered. So we did not achieve any funding when we applied in two thousand and eighteen.
So unfortunate.
It, it very unfortunate, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, so anybody else have their hand up to ask questions? Then I, we will close the public hearing.
It resolved that council closed the public hearing council for bylaw twenty twenty four six, being a bylaw to levy taxes for the year twenty twenty four.
I have a mover please, councillor DeBauw, seconded by councillor Imhoff. Any questions or comments? No hearing, no, I'll call for the question, all those in favor. That's carried, the public hearing is now closed. And then I will have the resolution to. adopt the.
It resolved that bylaw number two thousand and twenty four dash six being a bylaw of the R M, easing. Maybe taxes for the year twenty twenty four given first reason.
Can I have a mover please, councillor Horechko, seconded by councillor Postumas. Any questions or comments? No, okay, call for the question, all those in favor. That's carried. And I don't have the agenda in front of us, but I assume that was everything on the agenda, so I'll have the resolution to adjourn.
It resolved that the meeting adjourned, the time being six oh seven P M.
Can I have a mover please, councillor DeBauw, seconded by councillor Imhoff. Call for the question, all those in favor. That's carried. You know, we're still recording.